Good evening. This is the meeting of July 22, 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the applicable portions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been given. This meeting is posted on the bulletin board located in the corridor of this building and published in the newspaper on January 11, 2019. Councilwoman Noonan will offer a prayer and Councilwoman Gingrich will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Creator, open our hearts to peace and healing between all people. Creator, open our hearts to provide protection for all children of the earth. Creator, open our hearts to respect for the earth and the gifts of the earth. Open our hearts to exclusion, violence, fear among all. Thank you for the gift of this day and every day and take the time to always remember our military and when Sean Brown has passed, one of our correction officers. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have roll call?
Councilman Bakion?
Here.
Councilwoman Gingrich? Councilman Burns?
He's here.
He's here but not in the room. Councilwoman Noonan?
Here.
Councilman Gudanyo?
Here.
Councilman Bucio?
Here.
Council President Gross is absent this evening.
Okay, under recognition, we have Little League Champions, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Try again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sounds good. You'll be out of here in 15 minutes and you can enjoy the weather. Tonight, we're proud to recognize two league teams here, Berkeley Little League Champions. We have the Marlins. You can clap. The Marlins are the intermediate champs and then we have the Cubs, who are the AAA champs. So which division is higher?
Intermediate.
Intermediate, so we'll start with the AAA team. Sit down, Tom.
Tell the girls go first.
Ladies first. Coach, you want to come on up? You want to give a quick rundown on your team's season?
Okay. We had 13 boys on the team this year, so it was a little tough trying to figure out, because only nine can play in the field, but they were a great team to work with. We played 15 games and won 12 of them and the last one we won was our championship. But we not only won the championship this year, we won it last year also. So we're doing pretty well. I could say I did it all on my own, especially since all my coaches aren't here, but I didn't. So we had Pat Williams, we had Mike Bianco and Derek Rizzo. But unfortunately, nobody's...
That's for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
All the names?
Yeah, if you want to do that.
Yeah, okay. Joe Mattos. Josh Clark. This man goes by many names, but it's Joey Ursonoli. Silas Spodak. And last but not least, my son Ryan.
Does anyone want to come on down for a quick pick?
Oh, finally, someone smaller.
I just want to recognize Coach Kim. It was not June, it was the May meeting. You may have, for those of you here, I did leave the meeting because I had to go down to BTES and Kim played a big part in recognizing our Little Leaguers with the academic All-Stars. I know there's a lot of work that got put into that. It's always great that we not only recognize the winners on the field, but also the winners off the field, our kids that are working hard academically, because the academics are going to drive your future, not baseball. We all can't be outliers and top fagers. It's good to dream and continue to play and dream, but always remember, academics is what's going to help you in your future. So, thank you very much, Kim. Coach Tommy. Coach Tommy Perella, manager of the Marlins, who won our intermediate division. Coach!
How you doing? How you guys doing? That's good. I'd like to say a few things. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council and the people of Berkeley Township. On behalf of Berkeley Little League Board of Directors, it is my honor to be here tonight, not only as the Vice President of Berkeley Little League, but as a proud parent and a manager of one of the two championship teams that excelled through the 2019 spring season to earn the league's top spot in their respective division. Before we recognize, which we already did, the two teams, I'd like to express our appreciation to the Mayor and the Council for their continued support throughout our three baseball seasons each year. 2018 saw a buildings and grounds renaissance as our complex that included the completely rebuilt lighter field and major improvements to our other four fields that made Berkeley Little League the envy of so many leagues. We continue this effort this year to make our complex the safest and most beautiful place to play Little League baseball in all of New Jersey. While other organizations have seen drastic declines in registration, we remain strong and in fact, our fall ball program is growing at a rate where it may someday match the registration numbers as the spring. We couldn't have had this success we've been so blessed to be part of if it wasn't for the constant support from the Mayor and the Council. On behalf of our Berkeley Little League family, we thank you. The intermediate division, you know, it's a fairly new division. The numbers have shown in the past that once the boys graduate off the smaller fields and have to go on to the major league sized fields, there's been a major decline in the numbers of registrations and kids playing baseball. So they implemented this intermediate division where it's a field size which is in the middle of the small field and in the big fields where the major leaguers play. This was our first full season at this level. We were able to put five teams together and I was proud to say that we are champions.
Coach Bart?
Yes. One last thing. I could not have done this without my coaching staff. Coach Bart has been my backbone of this staff. Coach Steve in the back played a big role. Coach Dan Teasen, who couldn't be here tonight, was a big role and my backbone of my administration, Kim Fugia, was one of my coaches.
So if we learned anything tonight, we have to make sure that we get on Kim's team. Back to back, two divisions. Good job, Coach. Coach, who's Coach Steve? Joel German is not here today?
Colin Hopkins. Jada Rapier. My boy, Joseph Perla. Jaden Paul Castro. Jack Teasen couldn't be with us tonight?
Joel German is not here today?
My boy, Joseph Perla. Jaden Paul Castro. Jack Teasen couldn't be with us tonight?
All right, guys, you can go enjoy the rest of the evening. Thanks for coming out. Our champion Marlins and our champion Cubs. All right, guys, you can go enjoy the rest of the evening. Thanks for coming out. Our champion Marlins and our champion Cubs. All right, guys, you can go enjoy the rest of the evening. Thanks for coming out. Our champion Marlins and our champion Cubs. All right, guys, you can go enjoy the rest of the evening. Thanks for coming out. Our champion Marlins and our champion Cubs. All right, guys, you can go enjoy the rest of the evening. Thanks for coming out. Our champion Marlins and our champion Cubs. You can take your jackets off of the AC. I don't know what's the matter with that. I don't know. You should call Ted.
I didn't say a word. I'm sitting here trying.
Where's Lauren? I missed her a couple hours ago. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, we wait for Lauren? Okay, we'll go with discussion by administration.
Thank you. Item A is an introduction of an ordinance amending section 9-2.12 entitled "Vicious Dogs." It's on the official agenda as item number nine and essentially what it does is just make our ordinance comport with the state statutes and essentially that's all that the ordinance says, that it makes it, all the regulations are in the New Jersey statutes as annotated or what Berkeley will enforce when it comes to vicious dogs, because that's the most we can enforce. Item B is another ordinance introduction amending section 5-7 entitled "Garage Sales." There had been some concerns brought from the public that with the two death times a year and only two days given for a garage sale, that sometimes one day rains and the people have to come amend their application to do an extra rain date. So this ordinance amends that so that you can still do two garage sales a year, but now they're automatically for three days. Three consecutive days, so that then you sort of have a built-in rain date if you need it or do it for the three days. And that's on the official agenda as item number 10. The third ordinance introduction is for the sale of a property, block 301, lot 8, on Grand Central Parkway. The price is $18,300. This is an undersized lot to an adjacent property owner. As you know, the township, when it's made available, they will offer the property to adjacent owners. If only one wants the property, they can purchase it and it's generally purchased for the assessed value, which in this case was about $15,000. But when two property owners want it, as was the case here, we take sealed bids. We received one bid and it was for $18,300, so the township does a little better when that happens. That's on the official agenda as item number 11. Item D is the refunding of two properties for construction fees, both to Vivint Solar Developer, and this is what happens when people apply for a construction permit and then decide not to do the project. The township in the construction department keeps an administrative portion, I think it's 20% of the fee, and then the remainder is refunded. And these are two refunds. Block 1039, lot 9, is on the official agenda as 12.1 and block 260, lot 1, is on the official agenda as item number 12.2. And excuse me one second, Council President. The Mayor will jump in when he's good. Up to item E, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. This is item E, cancellation for taxes for 100% disabled veteran. E, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, which is on the official 12.3 to 12.18. M is a 50% cancellation of taxes for 100% disabled veteran. And, you know, I say about this all the time, that we support all of our disabled veterans. This is a great program that's administered through the township based on state statute, but it's also a unfunded state mandate. And I asked Fred to run the numbers and right now there's 38,365,600 worth of assessed property, which would generate $831,382.55 in property taxes that the township is not receiving because of the state mandate, state doesn't pay. So I say at every meeting, you know, we support all of our veterans, it's a great program. We're happy to do this for our veterans, who, many of them who are service-related injuries in the line of duty serving our country, and we support it 110%, but it's just, once again, the state of New Jersey has a state mandate that they're not providing funds for. So both of those are on the official.
Through the chair for the Mayor.
Yep.
Have we ever sent a resolution to Trenton asking for the mandate to be funded?
Yep, we have. We passed a resolution at the beginning of the year. Actually, the beginning of the legislative session, which was January of 2018. I'm, you know, Councilman Burns, I would, you know, welcome another resolution from the Council to send it again.
Well, Murphy seems to be doing a lot of good things for votes, so maybe he'll help us out a little bit. I'd like to make that motion for the resolution.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gingrich?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Gudanyo?
Yes.
And Council Vice President Bucio?
Yes.
Item G is just picnic approval for the Association of Music and Wellness Festival, which is at Veterans Park on Saturday, July 27, 2019, and that is also on the official item 12.10. This is in coordination with our summer concert series, although it's run by the Leonard family through their foundation and, you know, I think this is, what year, Bev? The eighth year or ninth?
Eighth year, I think.
Eighth or ninth year. That's actually, they get a lot of different vendors from all over the tri-state area to come. There's food, music, entertainment. It's a really nice added attraction that we added as part of our summer concert series. So I highly recommend, if you get a chance, to please come on out that day and you'll be able to see what the Association of Music and Wellness Festival is all about.
Item H is called a sidebar agreement. It's simply an amendment to the 2018 through 2021 Teamsters 97 Collective Bargaining Agreement. It does two very minor changes, moving a title from one grade to another where it was more appropriate and specifying language, which has been the policy anyway, of when a laborer is working for a certain period of time on a specific job, like the back of the garbage truck, after three months, then they would be moved to a more appropriate title of sanitation worker. That amendment or the approval of that sidebar agreement is on the official agenda as item 12.11. Item I is authorizing the refund of recreation fees. There's actually three of them. They all have to do with the summer program. The first one was a local couple who, their son, they didn't realize that there was not a doctor or nurse on staff at the summer program, which I don't believe there has been and there is not currently, but their son uses an EpiPen and with medical concerns, they decided that they were not comfortable with him saying. The other two, the first one is $100 for the two $50 bus fees which were paid and not needed because those people are going to take advantage of the extended program where we keep kids, we'll watch kids before and or after. And the second one is the reverse. They had paid for the bus fees, but they don't need it because, I mean, they're going to keep the bus fees and we're refunding the aftercare part because they're going to have the kids bussed home afterwards. So they're all legitimate refunds, but they can only be done with Council approval and that would be a resolution that's on the official agenda as item number 12.12. Item J is awarding a professional services contract, not in excess of $17,500. It should not be anywhere near that, actually. It'll probably be $4,000 or $5,000, but it's a specific thing, as I think the public and certainly the Council all know, we go out at the beginning of every year for professional services for numerous professionals and try to cover everything we need. We never did have a rest, yeah, historical or architect on staff and because we have a grant application in right now that is very critical and the timing is critical, long story short, the State Historical Preservation Society had come back with some feedback to us and said, "We'd love your application. We'd like to see it get good consideration." It cannot unless you get a preservation architect to come in and amend your scope of work. And so we reached out to several firms. The Mayor happened to remember that a principal from this particular firm, while he was a member of another firm, actually worked on our scope back in 2003, I think you said it was, and they're also excited about the project. So we were fortunate to find somebody that could jump in, even when the timing's tough, and get us our amended scope, which if you give it your approval tonight, they'll do so we can get it in by August 1st, which keeps us in the running for the grant. That resolution is on the official agenda as item number 12.15. Thank you.
Through the chair again, sorry.
Would that count as a historical building on Route 9 for grants?
My guess is that it might be one that can be applied for. I don't know if that's on the historic preservation list. I mean, to us, it's an historic building. I think we have...
Do you have money set aside for that building?
We do, locally.
Could we take it out of there?
We have to find out, bottom line, if that building is on the historic preservation list. I'm just not sure.
If it is, then the grant would help them.
Sure.
They could take the money out of what's sitting there.
Yep. And to your point, some of the township money that we had budgeted, like you said, was actually spent recently. They had guys over there replacing the, I think, the basement windows, putting some wells in around the windows to make it safer and more weather tight to start the process of fixing it up.
Thank you.
Item M is a request to waive zoning and construction fees for Holiday City First Aid Building. Holiday City First Aid is going to do some work in the building and since they're a nonprofit entity that supports the township, I'm making the request that we, to Council, that we waive both the zoning and construction fees and that's on the official, item 12.16.
That was Kay, I was saying. Right, that was Kay, correct?
Right. Okay. Item L is a recommendation for a resolution by the township of Berkeley County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the township attorney to join the lawsuit challenging the Attorney General's Immigration Trust Directive. And just on the official, this was something that was brought up at the Board of Freeholder meeting two weeks ago by Freeholder Kelly with regards to ICE's interaction with the Department of Corrections, and this is just supporting the Freeholder Board and also joining if there is a need to final the lawsuit. So under the directive, local county and state law enforcement personnel are ordered not to stop, search or detain immigrants at the request of ICE, except in cases of serious violent crimes or final deportation orders, whereas the directive has led to increased concerns by governmental entities and police forces due to the lack of information sharing and cooperation with ICE, whereas the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders has announced its intention to file a lawsuit to challenge the legality of the directive in federal court as the Board does not agree with the directive. And whereas several local Ocean County Departments, such as the Ocean County Jail, have continued to provide information to ICE despite the directive, leading them susceptible to reprimand from the state of New Jersey. And whereas the township wishes to authorize its police department to continue cooperating and sharing information with ICE, but will refrain from ordering the department to disobey the directive in fear that such individuals would be subject to retaliation from the state. And whereas the Mayor and Council support the Board in its decision to fight the directive and further believe that the course of action is the most proper and it will insulate employees from retaliation, and whereas the Mayor and Council pledge to join the lawsuit if and when necessary filed by the Board and further authorizes the township attorney to file such pleadings inappropriate at this time. So that is item 12.17 on the agenda.
Sorry, through the chair. Go on, John.
Through the chair, just going to ask the Council to seriously consider this resolution and not try to handicap our police department from doing what they do best, and that's protecting the citizens. So this is something that's very important. I don't agree with the decision that the Attorney General's Office made and again, I want to encourage my colleagues here to stand strong on this and support this resolution.
To add to John's comment, you might have heard Monmouth County and another county, Cape May, they have, they're doing it, but they had gotten in before the directive. That's how they're doing it, you know, so it's not like they're fighting any, but I know now that the administration is fighting on them, but like Councilman Bakion said, this is insane. Thank you. protecting the citizens. So this is something that's very important. I don't agree with the decision that the Attorney General's office made, and again, I want to encourage my colleagues here to stand strong on this and support this resolution.
To add to John's comment, you might have heard Monmouth County and another county, Cape May, they have, they're doing it, but they had gotten in before the directive. That's how they're doing it, you know, so it's not like they're fighting any, but I know now that the administration is fighting on them. But like Councilman Bakian said, this is insane. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I just agree that you have to support our police officers.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is supporting Senator Menendez and Senator Kennedy from Louisiana on a bipartisan flood insurance reforms. If you recall, last meeting, we adopted a resolution on opposition to the House version of a flood insurance bill that is working its way through the House of Representatives, which would make increases in the range between 18 and 25 percent per year until the actuaries of the insurance are fulfilled, which technically flood insurance policyholders can see their flood insurance double within, with every four years. So we unanimously approve the resolution in opposition. As a result of that, and also our partnership with Stop FEMA Now, several municipalities in Ocean County have adopted the identical resolution in opposition to the House resolution. Senator Menendez from New Jersey and Senator Kennedy, Republican from Louisiana, had put forth a bill in the Senate called the National Flood Insurance Program Reauthorization Act of 2019. And what this does, it reauthorizes the National Flood Insurance Program for five years, extending the program until September 30, 2024. The bill also provides for continuous operation in the event of a government shutdown, thus ensuring stability for homeowners, small business owners, and the real estate market. Ends runaway premium hikes by capping the annual rate increases to 9 percent. Currently, premiums can increase by up to 25 percent a year in perpetuity, which depresses property values, creates affordability challenges, and discourages participation in the program. This will put guardrails on FEMA's new unproven rating methodology, which we all know, which we all challenged when the preliminary maps came out back in, I think it was 2013? Jim? 2013, known as Risk Rating 2.0, and prevent a rate shock that would undermine and weaken the flood insurance program and put taxpayers on the hook for even more disaster assistance grants. Which, and what's a good part of this bill, is it excludes catastrophic loss years in the average historical loss year calculation in accordance with accepted actuarial principles, which basically means that property is a repetitive loss. They include that repetitive loss when calculating your flood insurance. This new bill would exclude that, so everybody starts even as moving forward. What's also good about this new bill is it increases the maximum NFIP coverage limits for structural damage in accordance with the federal standards, requires FEMA to offer flood insurance coverage to cooperative buildings on the same terms as a condominium owner in order to increase the number of properties that are insured, requires FEMA to perform a study on its availability to offer business interruption services. There's just a couple more I just want to highlight. Increases the cost of compliance, which modernizes the ICC coverage from $30,000 to $60,000 to better reflect the costs of mitigation projects that allow for proactive mitigation before natural disasters strike the program. Flood mitigation assistance grants, and then community rating system regional coordinator creates and authorizes funds where regional coordinator provide technical assistance for small communities to effectively participate and benefit from the CRS. Berkeley Township is part of the National Flood Insurance Program, the Community Rating System, which I will get to in a second. And it also authorizes, and this is another good part of this bill, authorizes nearly $400 million per year for what they call as preventin', prevention, to establish, many areas have been mapped in what they call for mitigation. An additional $400 million per year for mitigation. Mitigation is a pool of money where residents, if they want to, if they're in a flood zone, they want to raise their houses, they can apply it through this pool of money to raise their house to reduce the loss availability, which we have learned that. So there's a lot of good things in this bill. So we are asking the council to approve a resolution in support of this bipartisan legislation. And I just want to touch on two other quick things, Mr. President, if you don't mind. As you, as I mentioned, we are part of the NFIP CRS Community Rating System, which provides our policyholders here in Berkeley Township a discount. When we took office in 2012, we were a Class 7 community, which offered 15 percent discount to our policy floodholders. We went through a lot of ordinance revisions and planning revisions through Lauren's office, through Jim's office, and we reapplied to the NFIP CRS, and our community rating system was graded to a Class 6 community and to late 2013, 2014, which now enables our policyholders to get a 20 percent discount. Now, just that, there is approximately, well, not approximately, as of Friday, there is 2,615 flood insurance policies that are filled in Berkeley Township through the NFIP system with a premium of $1.7 million a year, which the average premium is $676. Because Berkeley Township took the initiative to update all of our ordinances through our planning office, through our attorney's office, our Class 6 rating, which gives our policyholders a 20 percent discount on flood insurance, gives our flood insurance policyholders roughly a $400,000 discount.
Every year.
Every year, which is huge. And we are really close working with our engineering firm on building our community rating system points, because every year, the community rating system is reviewed at by FEMA and NFIP, that the township has to update our ordinances on a regular basis. We have to do certain, what they call, public service with flood insurance, in which we did two of those seminars over the last years. We're doing what we can to increase our points when it comes to rerating, and we're really close to moving to the next level, which will make our township a Class 5, which would give policyholders a 25 percent discount, which would up that number to almost a half a million dollars in savings per year. So we're going to continue to update that. I know Lauren, Jim's office, also Jamie, and our engineering office is probably going to have some more revisions of our updated ordinances that are going to be done over the next few months. But this is why we do that, because, you know, you're talking $400,000 in flood premium savings per year for those 26 policyholders in New Jersey, because we are part of the CRS system. So I just wanted to make how important it is that we continue with the CRS and we import, we importantly support that resolution, which is on the official, I believe, 12.18.
Excuse me, Mayor. I just wanted to make everybody aware. I advised the agenda committee at our last meeting, but as you know, I also represent Lacey Township, and at our last meeting, we actually had residents come to the podium and request that they participate in the community rating system. And they actually talked about Berkeley and called out Berkeley and said that you guys are doing a great job, and they're hoping that they would do the same for them.
You're next.
Mayor, you know, this is a great thing we're doing, and a lot of people during the construction, when Ernie comes out or Jamie, they say, "Why do I have to do this? You know, why do I have to do a little more? This is why you got to do a little more." So the $200 you're spending on another flood vent, this is coming out to help you. But I think, are the maps set yet?
Councilman Burns, no, they're still in the preliminary stage, if you will. They have not been adopted as of yet.
But you're aware of, like, maybe the 10 houses and businesses that are in the wind zone or high-impact zone?
Yes, the velocity zone, and there's also the limo zone.
Can we appeal that for them to get that zone moved out?
We can appeal it on behalf of Berkeley Township.
You know, there's one house that's two feet into it, and I think his insurance is $15,000, $16,000, where the neighbors are $700.
Right.
But looking at the same bay, so.
Correct. We can, Berkeley Township can appeal the line as they struck it.
And throw it out to bay.
And they may require some additional information from the township, which would benefit, it would benefit the property owner. But many, many towns have undertaken that effort through the process. Tom's River has, Berkeley has, Brick Town has.
But we can do that.
So it's something we can look at if you want to go down that path.
Sure. Thank you. Think they'll ever have the map set?
Just by way of reference, I don't, you know, so Katrina happened down in the south, and it was years and years and years since then. I am not 100 percent sure they actually have approved maps as of yet. So it's not uncommon for this to go on more than 10 years.
Just, just one more note of information. Because we're an NFIP community rating system, each policyholder, the average policyholder is a $152 discount a year. So as, out of that, $400,000 pool, when they broke it up among the 2,600 policyholders, about $152 a year. So as Councilman Burns said, you know, put the $100 flood vent in, you're going to get your money back in returns, because we are part of the CRS.
And not to go too crazy, but if I could add one more comment, all the amounts of money the mayor talked about, the savings for the people, it's all percentage-based. So certainly, we all hope some of the new legislation gets passed, some of the proposals to increase the rates dramatically don't happen, but like everything, inevitably, the rates are going to go up. So while we have a 20 percent and hopefully then a 25 percent savings, those savings are only going to mean more money for, more savings for people. So it's, it's an important, important program.
You know, John, all the houses being lifted 10 feet, you think they're ever going to have to pay another claim?
And that's what I like about the provisions, they're going to allocate additional $400 million for mitigation, because that's the important part. Like, you just hit the nail on the head, Councilman Burns, if they utilize the mitigation money to raise their house, their flood insurance rates are going to be cut severely drastically, and it's a benefit to the NFIP, because they're front-loading the payout for the mitigation. So in the end, the home won't be damaged by the storm, so it's a win.
Yeah, one of the immediate concerns that residents spoke to us about in 13 and 14 was the idea that the ICC $30,000 amount simply wasn't enough to pick the house up. It was costing them $60,000, $75,000. So again, that's another carrot for people to go after. You'll have more houses in compliance, number of claims will go down, and our community rating will go up.
Thank you. And the last item from the administration is letter N. It's simply changing the date for the White Sands Beach Fishing Tournament for the American anglers. May seem inconsequential compared to all the big stuff we're talking about, but for the fishing tournament, they would like you to consider change, it was already approved for October 20th. They would like you to change the date to September 29th and keep October 20th as the rain date. And that resolution's on the official agenda as item number 12.33.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the mayor and council? Mayor Amato, do you have anything additional?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Tax bills were mailed last week. Just residents have until August, Monday, August 12, to pay them without interest or penalties. As you know, the municipal tax rate is remaining the same. There's no tax increase on the municipal portion, and the overall bill was actually pretty good. I think there was a small increase in the Board of Health and a small increase for the library, but overall, it was a really good overall tax bill. Just for the information, you know, 30 percent, approximately 30 percent of the tax bill is only for municipal services, and 70 percent are other entities, entities such as the library, both school districts, the county, county Board of Health. So I just want to, once again, thank the Council Finance Committee, Councilman, Council Vice President Bushio, Chairman of the Committee, Councilman John Bakian, and Councilwoman Sophia Gingrich, who work with the administration. Of course, I want to thank our Houdini, Fred Ebeneh, for his efforts for keeping an eye on the bottom line here in Berkeley Township as we move forward. As we move forward through the rest of the year, emphasis will remain on long-range financial stability, continued public infrastructure improvements, and our commitment to providing the important services that our residents have come to expect. And as always, I've received a lot of emails and phone calls and people stopping me in the stores, and people are very happy at the quality of life here in Berkeley Township. And we're going to continue to do that, because it really is a great place to live, work, raise a family, and retire. This Wednesday, our Sounds of Summer Concert Series continues at Veterans Park. Our first two shows was a tremendous turnout. I could not believe the turnout that we received for the first two shows. So we look forward to this Wednesday's concert, which is 6 o'clock, obviously, Veterans Park. Opening act will be The Sounds of the Street, which is popular doo-wop group, followed by Beginnings, which is the ultimate Chicago tribute band. If you're a Chicago fan, their horn section and vocals make you feel like you're in an authentic Chicago concert. We're happy that, we're happy to have them back. It's a great night of free entertainment for our residents. Please, you know, make sure you bring a chair. Refreshments are always provided by our nonprofit civic organizations. They use these fundraisers, use these concerts as fundraisers for their organization. And every, after each concert, I go around and talk to each vendor to see how they did. And each concert, they're raising more and more money for their organization, which is a great thing. So those are the two immediate things I wanted to discuss. And that'll be it for now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Bakian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment and a question for Ernie Peters, our engineer. Recently was, received a call from a concerned resident of Bayville section of Berkeley Township, and she had some concerns about children playing on the street, and there's an L-shaped roadway where North Island Road meets Pelican Island Road, and she was concerned that the, some people were missing the turn, and there was kids playing in that field. So I spoke with Mr. Peters, and he spoke with Lieutenant George Doan from our police department, and I believe there's going to be some kind of reflector signs that were suggested to put up. I guess my question is, do we have a timeframe on those?
First of all, I wanted to thank Lieutenant Doan for responding quickly in the rain and getting out there, taking a look at it, and making a recommendation. I now need to go with Public Works and Mr. Camera to get the, the exact location and type of signage we're going to get installed, decided, and approved. And we'll get working on that tomorrow. So hopefully, it's another week before we get started.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peters. I appreciate it. And thank you to Lieutenant George Doan for his expediency on it. Other than that, Mr. President, I have no other comments, so I-
Thank you.
Pass it along.
Sure. Councilman Gingrich?
Hi, everyone. Just a reminder, Friday, the 26th, we will have the Food Bank, 631 Jamaica Boulevard. And I would just like to extend a thank you to our Public Works. The tree came down in front of my house Wednesday night, and they were there in a flash. They took that tree away, and I have to say, they worked very hard in that pouring rain, and they did a fantastic job, so thank you. And that's really all I have today. Keep cool, everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. For the veterans, they're hired, they just hired three new permanent doctors at the Brick Clinic, and they're going through their training now, and they'll be there by the first week in August. They're also passing legislation to give disabled vets free beach buggy passes. I'm not sure of what the percentage is going to be, but when the bill gets signed, we'll know. Also, Murphy took the cap, there was a cap on superintendent salaries. If you were a regional superintendent, you were up here. If you were, you know, a Mayberry superintendent down here. So he took the caps off, but that's kind of troublesome, because here we're trying to, you know, cut taxes and keep spending down, and what this is going to do, if the superintendent goes up, of course, the assistant's going to go up, and everybody else will follow along. But he may be playing right into Sweeney's hand, because Sweeney is looking at any town that's less than 5,000 people, and they're not into a regional school district, that they have to go to a regional district. So the superintendents that are making a lot of money will no longer be superintendents. So we'll see how that comes out. Parking over on the island, South Seaside Park, it's a disaster, and it's probably a no-win for us, Mayor and the administrator. But the main problem is, you know, people that have bayfront homes, you know, think they own the bay, the view and everything, you know, we, Councilwoman Noonan was over there one day for three hours- You know, Councilwoman Noonan was over there one day for three hours because the one resident didn't want a bench in front of their house because it was obstructing their view. But she had no problem with beach chairs. But the problem over there is if you have an 80-foot lot, and your lot is all stone, you don't have a designated driveway. So what you can do is you could pull four or five cars in, you know, when you have something. But what it does, and the chief can attest that, now this 80 feet is taken out of the roadway for parking. So until there's designated driveways, you know, where you have like a two-car driveway or an 80-foot lot, that would allow two parking spaces on the road. And some residents last year were putting up their own no-parking signs or whatever. But for the engineer, you know, we got to think about somehow we can go because, you know, if they have a garage, you know, basically, you kind of figure that's their driveway. But if there's no garage and they have 80 feet of stone, they consider that 80 feet as a driveway.
Most of these problems come about from pre-existing conditions.
Yeah, they were 50 years old, these problems.
Right. And I'm not sure the planning or zoning board is missing that anymore. But to the extent we want to have a-
No, they're not. New houses are designated driveways.
To the extent we want to have a specific ordinance in the land use section of the code to ensure that no relief is granted from that sort of thing. We could probably work on that at one of the board levels. Going forward, we could, perhaps I could work with Lauren's office and see if there's a transfer of title or a request for a subsequent zoning permit if compliance with the new ordinance would be required. So someone decides to put an addition on their house, one of those things you have to do-
Then they have to comply with the driveway resolution.
Not unlike we do when people are non-conforming. We make them come more into conformance.
But these 50-year-old problems are going to remain.
I'm not sure if we have the ability to enforce new ordinances on pre-existing conditions.
Yeah, what happens now is Island Beach State Park closes at 10, and everybody starts coming down there and parking. And I know the administrator's been working on getting the parking lot from the state, but he told me today that the state's actually using it for overflows.
And if I can, through the chair, the, as the councilman had said, the administration has received lots of varied but very legitimate concerns from both council members, the mayor, of course, with very concern, and residents of South Seaside Park and visitors to South Seaside Park that are mainland Berkeley residents. So, long story short, we've had discussions already with our professionals. I believe one idea that we had discussed that could be really effective across the board, that I think we have the authority to regulate, but we'll be sure and we'll be sure to take in both local residents and outside residents' concerns. But to paint and then enforce parking stalls on the streets over there, I believe we have the ability to do, and it would be beneficial, I believe, at least just in a broad stroke to talk about it here today, to both the residents. Because what else happens? I know you brought out, the councilman brought up the one concern of like some residents, you know, maybe using too much driveway. But we also have the other concern where some residents with their legitimate driveway, it gets super crowded by cars parking like right up to it and a little over. So again, I can't stress enough, there's very legitimate concerns from our property owners over there as well as other visitors. And if we were to do a layout and paint parking stalls on all the streets, which I think we're entitled to, it would keep people off of people's driveways. It would designate parking spaces so that, we've all also seen the example where if one person parks here and one person leaves 10 feet and parks again-
Right.
-you don't, you end up with four spaces where you could have had five. So by laying it out and simply enforcing the fact that people have to park within the stalls, I believe we can do that. And I believe that would be a way to get more parking for visitors, better parking for property owners, and maybe actually make everybody happy. Anyway, that's where we're looking at.
All right. One other thing. Every year, I take some doctors from Rutgers University around the bay. And this Dr. Joanne Berger has written maybe 30 books on bays and nuclear plants, and she did a couple of After Sandy. But we went from Bricktown to Long Beach Island. And they go on every island, and they take the, there's baby chicks. They'll take a chick, and they'll pull a little feather out, and they check this stuff for toxology. And then they actually take an egg out of the nest, and then they take some feces, and then they take some water samples. And, you know, they can send us the report. But the bay's actually cleaning up. But it's pretty amazing to see these three doctors, you know, going through the weeds. And there's a little island off of La Veleque that's, the eggs are all over the beach. But, you know, we went as far down as Clam Island, and there was a lot of chicks, you know, size. But I have a lot of photos, and, you know, maybe I'll blow them up and put them out here. But it was pretty interesting. But doing this trip, you know, I know everybody can't do it, but we live in an amazing area, you know, of the bay, you know, with South Seaside Park and our whole bayfront, Berkeley Island Park. You know, it's really amazing. And I was happy this year. I only picked up about four plastic bottles and one Mylar balloon, you know, in that whole bay section. So it was pretty good. But this doctor also did some cable. And I thought that, I don't know if this is, it could work, but our cable station, you know, they put a lot of time with just kind of news. If we could do some cable shows, you know, a half hour of something like This Bay, you know, an educational film, or have a half hour of Live PD, or, you know, something like that. But, you know, put how the town works and, you know, different educational things. So I don't know how we could put that together, but, you know, even if it was 15, 20 minutes, maybe Councilman Noonan could work on that. She's good with the TV. But also, I noticed the mayor, there's some grants in for some roads over by the bay. Remember, all the drainage goes right into the lagoons. So the roundup, the fertilizer, everything that's in the road, people are swimming in. And this roundup is pretty serious stuff, you know. And, you know, I know a couple of kids in the neighborhood that have had some problems, but just be mindful of what you put out there. And also the mosquitoes, you know, if you have worms laying around or whatever, dump it out. But, you know, I thought some kind of, you know, it wouldn't have to be in every show, but, you know, just put something like that on there. You know, the airport, maybe, you know, we could kind of promote the town of, you know, how great this area is.
Does that person already have something ready to go on? Does she have her phone?
No, we would do it.
Okay, I can give it to you if you give it to me.
Yeah. And I'll give you her name, and you can, you know, look at her books. But we're really in a great area here, and we're keeping it great. Also, I'd like to, if we could, get more sand added to the bay beaches. With this heat, the beaches were packed. And the one bay beach over in Seaside, you know, we were going to take some of the spillage sand every spring and put it on that beach. But I guess we didn't have much spillage, you know, with the Corps of Engineers doing it this year. But if we could clean up with a little more sand and increase the beach width, all right? But I want to thank the council and the administration for everything they do with the environment. If anybody wants to go for that boat ride, it was amazing. And the clams in the bay this year, everybody's going out and getting 100 in an hour. I couldn't get 100 if I went to the fish store. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Noonan.
Yes, thank you. I don't have too much. Just a reminder, as the seniors or anybody, you have to have numbers on your house, have to be visible. I have been out many times, and it's hard for the police officers, it's hard for the first aiders. If you don't have a number on your house, even on the curb in the wintertime, that's covered up. It doesn't seem like an important thing, but if they're at night, right, they have to put the light on to find the house or the ambulances. They may know the streets, but they don't necessarily know the numbers. It's very, very important that you do that. The second thing, it's just a small reminder, there is no air B and B in the senior community to rent rooms. It's come to my attention that there have been people who have tried to do that. It's illegal. You can't do that. Also, back to the bill S2425, it went to the Senate. It passed in the Senate, now goes to the Assembly. There is still a serious issue with me. I still find these signs all over the place. These people want to buy our houses. I pick them up all the time. These are not real estate people. People want to break the rules in the community. The S88 is a bill that if you are a 55 community anywhere in the state of New Jersey, you must be 55 to live in a house. But that's the only one thing. I understand there's some problems with some of our residents not understanding the difference between our ambulances and Monarch. This is a very serious problem, has been for many years. I'm sure that Councilwoman Gingrich has dealt with this issue where some, an ambulance goes to the house, our volunteers pick them up. When we do it, we don't charge, well, we charge, we take whatever insurance pays. But if a paramedic gets in that ambulance, they charge. They have no agreement with the town. It's very confusing for some of our residents, and it's a very serious thing because that bill's a couple thousand dollars. And they say, I don't want the param, but they don't understand if a paramedic, you call on a heart issue or you can't breathe, automatically a paramedic comes out unless you deny it. So this, I am going to do an article on it to remind people, the town only does the insurance, but paramedic does not have an agreement with the town, does not want to give us one, correct, Mayor?
Correct.
It does not want to give us one, which has caused problems over the years. So I am going to put some more with the help of the chief. This is a very important issue because when they get the bill, these people cannot afford it. So they have to make arrangements. I don't care whether you're a senior or you're a regular person, you get that paramedic bill. And as a reminder, I believe Councilman Bakian one time was affected. That helicopter ride is $20,000. Not $2,000. It's, I had Monarch come to the coalition and ask, somebody thought, oh, it's $2,000. I said, what's the cost of a helicopter ride? $20,000, maybe $21,000. So, but I know that there's been some issues lately, and this is a very big one. But other than that, I really don't have too much to say. There was a complaint about deer. Well, it's not a heck of a lot we can do about the deer. I'm really sorry. They are out there. I think they were there before us. But thank you, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Through the chair, Mr. President, just to-
Yes.
And that helicopter ride, the insurance company did not cover.
You're right. And how much was it, Councilman?
It was $12,250. Councilman Gudano.
Thank you, Councilman Bushio. Just three quick things. Number one, I just wanted to mention, I know I do it every month in the spring and summer, but the farmers markets have been doing tremendously well. Our, we're at the Recreation Center that happens on Tuesdays, has been extremely busy, best in five years. And the new one over in South Seaside Park has been overwhelmingly busy. The foot traffic is tremendous. We started off with six vendors, we are now up to 10, and that's pretty much all we can handle over there. So it's actually going extremely well. I'm hearing nothing but positive reviews. Number two, on the recreation calendar that came out, where we listed the concert series, we had on September 14th a John Marco Action Sports Contest that we did last year. We had over 1,000 people attend. That date's going to have to be changed. We're possibly looking at September 28th. I just want to let everybody know that because John had an injury over the winter, and he wasn't supposed to be back for the world championships in Spain in June. He worked himself back, and that's why he committed to that date because he wasn't supposed to win. He actually squeaked into the last final spot over in Spain, and the next day, he went out and he won the world championship. So he's number one in the world, he's a world champion, and with that comes some commitments. So he has to be in England on September 14th. I tried to convince him to stay, but he's getting paid like $45,000 to go there. So how do you tell a 16-year-old, you can't go, you're getting $45,000? So we're going to, but it's really important to him and his family that they give back to the community. You know, they make no money on this or not like that. So we're looking at the September 28th date, so hopefully we work that out. Also, I was on homework the other day, and, you know, being a teacher, I hate to admit this, but school is coming around soon, and all the school supplies are coming out. And I know the mayor does a school supply drive, and our next meeting is in August, it's like August 26th, so it's kind of a little late. But if you notice, in the next week or two, a lot of school supplies will be out for sale. The mayor, if you can just want to give, maybe touch a little bit on this when I'm done. But, you know, being a teacher, I see the effect of all the donations that our community gives. And I said this last year, you can't, it's priceless to see the children's reactions when you give them a folder, a pencil, a highlighter, a bookbag. Alone in my class last year, I had 25 students, I gave out six bookbags, six. So we have 24 classes, 25 classes at BTS, and probably the same around all the other schools. So you could think about how many supplies go out. When the kids get these supplies, they're overjoyed, they're happy. It changes their whole outlook on the day, the year, it makes them feel better about themselves. And, you know, you wouldn't believe it, but yes, they do need pencils, they do need folders, highlighters, those little cases that hold pencils and scissors and things like that. The schools do supply certain things, but we also do, you know, teachers do ask for certain things that the students have, binders, folders, bookbags, and all that stuff is very cheap. So it's been overwhelming, right there. I mean, we couldn't ask for enough stuff. We're getting more than we've ever asked for. We're making so many kids happy. So, you know, I always want to say as a teacher, thank you to our community. I mean, we really have a great community. You guys support everything out there. Mayor, maybe want to just add to it, and that's all I really had to say, so.
Thank you, Councilman. How many days in county?
I don't say, Mayor, I don't know.
Josh, how many days?
Calling out the first day. Calling out the first day.
I know the teachers, but with all seriousness, you know, the school supply drive started eight years ago when I went to back-to-school night. And I was walking around with the superintendent and went into a couple of classrooms to say hello to some teachers. And you notice that the desks, there were some desks where we're piled with stuff and some desks that were empty. And that's when I said, you know, we got to do something a little bit more. Berkeley Township, Bayville, has always been a well, a good-giving community, and they continue to do that. And what we do is we collect school supplies, as the councilman said, crayons, colored pencils, regular pencils, pens, markers, you know, highlighters, folders, glue, glue sticks, little scissors, you name it, but mostly folders and bookbags. A couple of local businesses have come, who actually do supply drives to support our, Keller Williams Real Estate Agency does a great job in collecting stuff for us, and also a few of the local banks. We will be announcing it at the concert Wednesday night, that we're going to start the school supply drive. And future concerts will have boxes available for residents to drop off school supplies. They could drop it off here at Town Hall, our Recreation Center, or the concert series. Last year, if you can see the pictures on our website, the amount of generosity that the town comes through. So we'll start doing that again, and I appreciate Angelo for bringing that up. But we're going to start publicizing it at this Wednesday's concert and moving forward to get as much as we can for our students in need. The second thing-
I just got to that, it's just two also, not, it doesn't really get mentioned here, but sometimes it goes out in notices through school that during the winter months too, our guidance counselors usually collect winter coats. I think that's probably, Josh, probably for the high school, middle school, down to elementary schools. We give out a lot of winter coats, so that's just something else. If you have something, you want to donate, or you're looking to be generous, our guidance counselors, and you could just drop them off, and they'll hold them until they find out who needs a winter coat. So it does, we do need those too. Sorry, Mayor, interrupt, I just-
No, that's okay, thank you. And as an added incentive, we get donated, a person who doesn't want to be mentioned, doesn't want the recognition, but somebody donates gift cards, $25 gift cards that we raffle. So when you drop off school supplies, you get a little ticket, and you go and into the lottery. And if your ticket's big, you get a $25 Visa gift card, so that's very nice. And it's pens, pencils, paper, notebooks, and other supplies to be collected for our elementary school, and if there's a need for the middle school as well, recreation booth at the summer concerts. So I appreciate Angelo bringing that up, and we'll continue to plug that. Speaking of South Seaside Park, July 31st is our annual beach party at White Sands Beach in South Seaside Park from 5:30, 8:30. The band Alotta Calata will be playing, it's a jam and island band with great music, props, lots of- jam and island band with great music, props, lots of energy, and we usually get a good turnout. And then, since our next council meeting is in late August, I want to announce August 7th is our eighth annual Night Out Against Crime. This is in conjunction, we've molded this with our summer concert series. So the Berkeley Township Police Department will be on hand, along with our first aid squads, fire departments, and other public safety agencies to greet residents and show different types of equipment that they utilize. These are public safety agencies, will have their vehicles and equipment on display. It's always a great turnout. Our DARE program will be there with games, and prizes for the children. That starts at 5:30, Wednesday, August 7th. And also, the group performing that night is the Infernos, which is America's number one show band. So we got a great lineup that night. Come on out to our Night Out Against Crime, that's something that the chief and I started eight years ago, because Berkeley Township never participated in the Night Out Against Crime, so we've been doing this, it's our eighth year. It gets bigger and better. I want to thank Lieutenant Roth, Lieutenant, not Michael, Ryan does it. Jimmy's doing it now? Oh, Lieutenant Jimmy Smith, formerly Lieutenant Ryan Roth, will do a great job to make sure. So the pressure's on Lieutenant Smith, huh? Lieutenant Jim Smith. We have two Smiths and two Roths that are lieutenants, so we got to identify them by first name. So that'll be a great night. And then lastly, Mr. President, over the weekend, I received a couple emails from residents and senior, some veterans in the senior community, asking about the legislation to increase the standard $250 veterans deduction. So there are several bills that are out there, and I'm going to ask the council for a resolution, to adopt a resolution in support. There is a Senate concurrent, these all have to be constitutional amendments, they have to, they have to be approved by the legislature, and then it goes on the ballot for a vote by the public. So it's a Senate Concurrent Resolution 108 slash Assembly Concurrent Resolution 69, and that proposes to increase the veterans' deduction to $500. There's a couple more. There's also an Assembly Concurrent Resolution 81, which increases the veterans' property tax deduction to $1,000, and provides CPI Cost of Living Index increase each year. There's another version in ACR, Assembly Concurrent Resolution 110, and that increases the vets' deduction to 500. And then there's Senate Concurrent Resolution 78, which gives incremental increases over a few years, which is a two, right now, it's a $250 deduction, and gives it, increases $50 a year over the next five years to $500. So I'm going to ask the council to adopt a resolution to support each of these concurrent resolutions, and we send certified copies to the Senate President, the Assembly Speaker, the Ninth, Tenth, Thirtieth, and Thirteenth Legislative Districts in support of these Assembly Concurrent Resolutions.
I'll make the motion, because it has to be individual each, I'll make this for all. I'll make the motion for the resolution.
Throw a call, Councilman Bakion.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gingrich. Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Absolutely.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Council Vice President Bucio.
Yes. Mayor, was that it?
That's it, Mr. Councilman.
Your, your time was up anyways. I just wanted to echo your comments. I was out and about town this weekend, and people got their tax bills, whether it was neighbors, or I have family live in town, and everyone was, I said, "Did you see your tax bill?" I said, "Yeah, it didn't go up," or "It went up like five bucks or something." So I think it's really a testament to this council and administration to really, you know, I have people I work with that live in North Jersey, have relatives in North Jersey, their taxes are going up $200, $300, $500 a year, and, and ours is going up dollars. So I think it's, you know, we're trying to maintain a good quality of life here, and at the same time, recognizing, you know, affordability for, for residents of Berkeley. So, you know, we all live in town here, so we, we want to work just as hard to keep the taxes in check. So I think my taxes went up $18 for the whole year, which is, I'll take that anytime, so. And that's all I had. So discussion by the township engineer.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the request for authorization to advertise and receive bids for three projects. The first is Jamaica Boulevard's culvert repair, which is on the official agenda, is item 12.19. Next is one of the 2019 road resurfacing projects, which include Cortland Drive, Dupont Court, Herald Court, which is on the official agenda, is item 20, 12.20. Another 2019 roadway resurfacing project for Barbados Drive South, St. Croix Street, St. Martin Place, and St. Nicholas Court is on the official agenda, is item 12.21. Next is the award of a contract for the 2019 various drainage projects to Shoretop Construction, which is on the official agenda, is item 12.22. Next is the award of a contract for the Donnet Drive and Santiago Drive's Mill and Overlay Paving Project to Earl Asphalt, which is on the official agenda, is item 12.23. Next is the award of a contract for 2019 roadway resurfacing and reconstruction of Puerto Vallarta Street, which is on the official agenda, is item 12.32. Next is the award of a contract for the Butler Boulevard Pier Rip-Rap Stabilization to T.R. Weniger, which is on the agenda, is item 12.24. Next is the denial of a request for a performance bond release for River Bay Landings. The applicant simply didn't finish some of the, some small items. They didn't get their request to extend the time, or they didn't submit a request to allow the governing body additional time, so we have to deny the request in a timely fashion. We've already scheduled a, a meeting with the developer to get these punch list items done, and we hope to have them back on for a release at the next meeting. So that denial is on the official agenda, is item 12.30. And the last engineering matter is a performance bond reduction for Hickory Farms Phase III, which is on the official agenda, is item 12.31. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair for the engineer. Item E, you said that's on the official for 1224?
Yeah, the numbers, I think, are wrong.
The numbers are wrong?
Yes.
Okay.
Sometimes when we get them a little late, we mess up.
Sometimes I read-
That's me.
Sometimes we mess up the clerk's order by getting her stuff after they're due.
That's correct.
All right, we have-
Our apologies.
It's okay.
Discussion by the township clerk.
I have approvals for two firemen for the Bayville Fire Company, Jeffrey P. Dean and Ethan R. Elliott. They've been, background checks have come back from the police department, and everything's okay. We're ready to appoint them, and they're on the official, is items 12.27 and 12.28. That's it.
I know Mayor Amato has one more item before-
Yeah, well, it's, it's a quick one, and it's, you know, I discussed it with the police chief, and that, asked the council to adopt a resolution, asking the County of Ocean to complete a traffic study on Mill Creek and Veder. I know there are some concerns with the additional construction going around in that area, about, possibly about a traffic control device being there, but before that, before we can get to that part, we want to make a, an official request to the county. They know it's coming. I know the chief had already spoke to John, you spoke to John, right? Jamie, Jimmy Kamoka? Okay. So that's just, ask for a resolution to request the County of Ocean to complete a traffic study on Mill Creek and Veder.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Oh.
That's her word.
Throw a call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Here we go.
Councilwoman Gingrich?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Thanks, Keith.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Council Vice President Bucio?
Yes. Okay, the meeting is now open for public comment. We have two people that signed up to speak. The first one on the list is Diane Carvalho. Diane, could you give your full name and your address for the record, please?
Diane Carvalho, 25 Sheep's Head Drive, Berkeley Township, New Jersey. Can you pull the mic towards you?
Can you pull the mic a little closer so we can hear you? Thank you.
I was here last month in reference to garage sales, yard sales, being a resident of, being a resident of Silver Ridge Westerly. And I talk very softly, that's why I'm married for so many years. Talks soft, carry a big stick. I'd like to, I was here last month requesting a rain date for the garage sales. I see that is on your agenda this month. I greatly appreciate it. As a member of the Entertainment Committee of Silver Ridge Westerly, for the past two years, we've had a community sale that we take months preparing maps of every location, every home that's going to have a sale, putting up signs, running around ourselves, you know, banging them in everywhere. And we've only been able to use one of those two days allotted to us. So I really commend you for putting forth this proposal to amend the garage sale ordinance, to make it a three-day, should weather require it, because it's just been a lot of work. I hope you will all approve this, and I will wait to see, and then immediately start unloading my attic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next, is it Joey Pacifico? Can you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yes. Pretty short, too. How's that? Can you hear me?
If you're close to it, it works.
Okay. My name is Joey Pacifico. I am a resident at 103 23rd Avenue, as well as 250 23rd Avenue in South Seaside Park.
Thank you for calling.
Thanks, thank you, and thank, thank the clerk for getting my email to all of you as well. I also hope I'm not someone that Congressman, Councilman Burns thinks owns the Bay, I don't, but I did talk with Councilwoman Noonan about the bench, and my concerns weren't about blocking the view or anything, they were just about it being at a low spot and being afraid it would wash onto the yard, but that's why I'm here tonight, anyway.
It was actually one of the other houses that was picked up here.
Oh, good. Because I'm nervous enough the way it is, you know. So the reason I'm here is about the traffic ordinance, and I'd like to ask for an amendment to that regarding the Bayview Avenue section. My concern is, and I don't know whether I should go into any detail now, it's just that, that part of the road doesn't have any sidewalks or bike lanes, it's very narrow. I had one of the officers help me measure it yesterday in the heat, and it's about 27 feet wide. So having both sides of the street parking leaves very little room for people to go back and forth, the, the traffic to go back and forth. And it's one of only three north-south roads on South Side, on the island in South Seaside Park, so it gets a fair amount of traffic, especially in warm months. There's, there's also a-
Can I interrupt for one second?
Certainly, of course.
I really apologize, but that ordinance, if everybody's not aware, she's referring to the traffic ordinance where we would have resident-only parking on one side of Bayview. That's on for a public hearing and adoption tonight.
That was just for the east side.
Yeah, but-
It says both.
And that's what I said. The discussion on that, not to cut you off-
Oh, certainly.
But if you can stay after the closed session, that will be on the agenda for the council to vote on, but the process is that you or anyone else, aside from your regular public comments-
Yes.
There'll be a specific public hearing, and that's the better time, I think, to interact with the council-
Later tonight, you mean?
About it.
Later this evening, you mean?
Tonight's meeting, yeah.
Okay, certainly.
Official meeting right after they have their close.
I'm happy to do that thing.
Thank you.
There was no parking on the east side, and resident parking on the east side.
I, I think, I believe, and we'll double-check, that the ordinance was that it would be resident-only parking on the west side, and still public parking on the east side, which is the way it exists now. But that's why we should discuss it before you vote on it, at the public hearing. Yeah.
I can, I can wait till then, then, because that is my concern.
Yep, and we want to make sure-
The only other comment I would make is, I do have, I know the photographs had to be hard to photocopy, and I have them here if you want them. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Do we have, thank you. Any other residents would like to come up to the microphone? Get your name, full name and address for the record, please.
Brett Callahan, 117 Anchor Drive, South Seaside Park. As far as you're talking about 24th, there's no way in hell you're going to be able to park on both sides of the street, yet still maintain traffic through there. I'd just say that. Now, I've come for you to maybe enlighten you about Ebbies. Now, you were nice, the mayor showed me that you gave Ebbies an easement so that they could use town property on 21st. Now, I don't know any, I don't remember reading that included in this easement was his permission to erect a permanent gazebo, which he turned into a bar. I don't also remember what the, the easement granted him permission to erect tables and chairs and benches along Central. But right now, or I can't say right now, but as of about five hours ago, I went by there. It's still the walkway across 35, which enters into the north side of 21st, is blocked. You got two benches across it. Now, I don't, yes, go take a look. And also, if you want to- Also, in front of the building near, they have a rather narrow sidewalk, I'm going to guess it's probably about five or six feet wide.
On 35.
Yes. You have tables and chairs out there. So if you want to walk, I don't think two people could pass. You could one go through there. So I guess you got to have a traffic cop out there, that you, you can either walk south, or you can walk north, but can't both simultaneously, or they'll be walking out in the pavement there, and I'm very happy there to say that an ambulance shows you would have a good time there if somebody gets hit. But I think you guys ought to lean on this guy a little bit. I mean, you give him a, you give an easement, and he erects a permanent structure on it? And then a bar, is he allowed to serve liquor on town property?
Well, that's ABC.
Right.
It's based upon his license right now, it means them.
Pardon me?
Right now, no. It depends on his license. He hasn't, I don't think he's received approval to extend on to that. I don't know where he's serving, but I, I can't speak to that, but I, I don't believe, and the clerk just said, confirmed. It's not supposed to be-
Well, when you get over there, take pictures of it there, you certainly see it's a bar there. Now, I can't, as it, can't say whether they serve liquor there or not, I don't know, but there's a bar there. But still appealing, can't you lean on him a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please approach the microphone. Have your, your full name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Gary Holston, 21 21st Avenue, Seaside Park. First, I want to thank the mayor and council for taking steps forward on the ICE issue. I think it was a great step to take. I think our AG and our governor have gone totally the wrong way, and the majority of people feel the same way that you do, and I do personally. On the parking issue on 21st, in regard to your comment on the 80-foot frontage, I've owned my property since early 90s, mid 90s there, and there's only one house on that street that has property that's more than 80 feet wide, and it's a brand-new house, and they actually have-
Most of them are 40s.
Or 50. In fact, there's a couple duplexes there that are 50 foot wide, but they only get half of it, so it's 25 feet. And what's happening is, it's not so much the, the people from the park that are spilling over, it's the lazy people that live in the area, that there's parking places available out on Central that you guys made available to people, and they don't want to walk. They want to come- they don't want to walk. They want to come up to the beach or close by and get out and carry their stuff. And I get it, it's hot. I know a lot of our neighbors on our street in particular offer all the time, "Pull in. Don't block my driveway. Pull in." I have designated driveways, but alongside is stones and so forth, and there isn't anybody on my block, except maybe some people in a condo, that haven't been offered. If you have a picnic, a party, something going on, come on over to the house and park there, but don't block my driveway. Had an incident recently. Somebody pulled out front. It's a local individual that everybody would know if I mentioned the name. Politely went out. I said, "That's not a parking place." And she looked at me and said, "You can't have two driveways." Those two driveways are there from 1947 when the house was built, and it's a U-shape. And they think they can, there's a telephone pole there. They think that their car can park right by the telephone pole, and that's a parking place. There's been misinformation, and I'm not saying it came from here, but they started recently, for a few years it was pretty quiet. Now, they, even that information had even disseminated down to the police that when they showed up said, "You can't have that as your driveway. You only get 15 feet." No, no, 12 feet, and so forth. And so you get people that actually argue with you, and it's just created a real problem. And it's a good idea, I guess, if you think that you can paint something on the road--
Parking stops.
But the problem's going to come in, in those 50 and 25-feet small lots. I have a son, a daughter, grandkids, friends that come over. They're either going to get those spots anyway, and nobody's going to be parked in the yard, and it's not going to accomplish anything from Central to the beach, anyway. They have an ordinance for the parking permits, and everybody goes down to get one. Well, I read the ordinance and a copy of it, and maybe the township attorney could shed some light on it, but it actually says from 20th to 24th, from Central up to the beach, but it says you have to reside there, you have to rent there, you have to get one.
Not there, in Berkeley Township. I'm sorry.
Well, but I, I get that, but it, it actually causes more of a problem, because I know people on the other side, they go, "I got a permit. I can park here." And there's no parking there, but they come over and, "Hey, I got a permit." The idea of having that permit, and, you know, it's nice that you held the line on taxes and everything, but from Central to the, to the ocean, all those lots, I know mine's assessed $100,000 higher than the next block over, coming down to the Central, and then going towards the bay. If we're paying all this, man, do something for me. I don't care about the guy that's visiting down there. I don't care about the guy one block away. And I'm, I'm pro-police, believe me. But I think we need some kind of enforcement. Without any enforcement, you never get anybody to go along with what should be done. And I don't say write tickets on all these. You know, go out and, and have a certain amount of time where you just put a sticker on. They're not going to like it stuck to the window, but says, "Hey, this is no parking place." You know, park in the middle or wherever it might be. Again, like I say, that duplex, somebody owns 25 feet of it, so they can't even park between each other. And if you get a car on the end, you know, 12, 14 feet, doesn't leave a lot to get around when you have a half a dozen people coming to your house. I know it's a sore spot, and I think for years that I've been there, everybody starts talking about it. Hey, we're going to try to do something without curbs and curb cuts. It's almost impossible to do. But, you know, I just believe that if the information got out to the people saying, "Look, they're not parking places. You're talking four blocks from Central to the ocean," that I know if I drive down to Belmore or some of the others, I know I don't dare park someplace, or I know I'm going to, you know, get a ticket, so, so nobody does it. So, is that the answer? Maybe some police intervention to say, "Hey, here you go," and then maybe we can get some compliance. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I could respond. You know, when we were discussing, we talked to the engineer, you know, some of this goes back 50 years. But the biggest problem I've noticed is some of the business on Central Avenue. When they start parking towards the west, you know, some of those lots are a little wider, and they're just parking everywhere. You know, you have to park somewhere.
And I get that. And the only thing I'm going to say, anybody's invited, you come down to the beach, pull in my house, you're welcome, any of it. But there's one house on the whole street that is bigger than 80 feet, and they bought two lots, put it together, and it's a gigantic house.
Well, that's why we're actually trying to get that lot off the state, so the guards could park there. Maybe the Ebby's and Bum's and the Pier could do a valet and park over there. Kind of free that whole area. You know, this is a tough one.
The biggest time during the day for swimming up on a beach, there's open spots out in the middle. You guys created a lot more parking places than have ever been there. You're there, and people just aren't utilizing. So it's not, you know, you guys are trying, but like I say, the people aren't doing it until they get kind of forced into parking where it might be an extra 100 feet to walk to the beach, you know.
But we would welcome anybody's input, because this is not an easy one.
Thank you very much.
Could I just say one more thing?
Please, please approach the--
I'm the neighbor of Gary.
Get your name and address for the record.
421st Avenue. There's a condo right across the street from me. They have their own parking lot right in front. They have another lot over on the side. When they have their family come down, I've heard them say, "Where are we going to park?" And they'll say, "Oh, just park over here. Park in front of his driveway, in front of my driveway. Park in front of Gary's driveway." They have their own, they have their own spaces. Go in the street. Go, go up the block and park. It, it's really not fair. It, it's just not fair.
I agree with you. Through the chair, that's why, again, we're definitely going to have people looking at it. With no curbs and curb cuts, it is difficult, but painting the stalls and then yellowing other parts, it can be done on the street, I believe, to make it better for everybody. And thank you both, but that's the main reason we ask for people is addresses. You keep saying, "When you want to come to the beach, come to your house," and now we all have your address, and we're going to show up. So, thank you.
John, just, I want to, I went out this, I went out there last weekend, another resident, and I drove around, and I noticed if you have a 40-foot lot, people have a 40-foot driveway. They've got four cars parked across the front of their house, so you can't park in front of the house anyway.
Right.
And without curbs, I don't see how it's going to be very challenging to, if you don't have curbs and curb cuts.
But the stalls that would be painted on the street would be the same as stalls that are painted in an area with curbs. I mean, yeah, with curbs and curb cuts, and you designate by the stalls where the actual driveway is.
Some people have designated driveways--
Exactly.
But a lot of the houses, the whole front is stoned, and I saw them, it was on the weekend, they had four cars parked head-on in front of the whole lot, whether it was 40 feet or 60 feet or 70 feet. And that's, the whole front of the lot, the front is all parking.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Banda Graff, 339 Bayview Avenue. The problem in South Seaside Park with the parking is you don't have curbs. That's the problem. Okay? Now, to solve that problem, we should have a capital improvement project bonded with curbs and to be, bonds to be paid for by special assessments or prorated over a 10-year period for each property owner. And I don't know, Ernie's familiar with the, with the cost of curbing per foot. If you have a 50-foot lot, you should get a 12-foot curb cut at the location desired by the homeowner, and that's it. That'll open up a tremendous amount of off-street parking. And if you prorate the cost to each, under a special assessment, which you're allowed to do, over, prorated over a 10-year period, the cost would be, I see Ernie doing the math there.
The engineering fees.
Okay. And I, I see that the cost would be minimal, minimal.
Nothing's minimal.
No, I mean, no, I mean per homeowner.
Bill, you might not drive over there.
Per homeowner.
You're not going to leave a lot.
Okay. And if they ever were successful in their secession movement, they would owe us that bonded indebtedness in full. Would that be correct, Fred?
Yes.
They would have to pay us in full, that bonded indebtedness?
Yes.
And they would be locked in to paying us that, which would deter them from secession also. So you're killing two birds with one stone. One would be, you're solving the parking problem. You're also creating a capital improvement to improve the area by installing curbs, which you should have anyway, and protecting us against secession. That's, that's just my opinion.
Billy, Bill, one thing. When I was out there, I took a really good look around. The person who's got the four or five cars parked on his front, when you put curbs in, he's going to be able to fit two cars now. So you're going to have all those people coming up here and complaining that you took away four or five parking spots, not going to fit two cars. Am I right?
We did that a long time ago in Lavallette, and yeah, there was complaints. You have a 50-foot lot, you get a 12-foot curb cut. That's it. Or at location of your choice. I mean, that's just the way it is.
Councilwoman Burns, this is a tough one.
You can have a two-car garage.
You can't please all the people all the time. This is a real tough one.
There comes the solution.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
No, I'm going to throw in another government. Town Buddhist, 121 Anchor Drive, South Seaside Park. Over on Beach Drive, it's been there for years and years, a small cottage. Both the parents have passed away. There was a handicap spot parked in front for them. Two sons have been using the house, and recently they purchased a house diagonally across the street. So now they had their handicap parking spot put across the street. But they have a double-wide driveway. They come down on the weekend with four cars. They park on the driveway. There's nothing there. So you're losing a parking spot there.
Is it on both sides of the street that they're--
Pardon?
Do they still have the handicap on both sides of the street?
The, the township took the sign off and put it over at the new house and painted the lines, but the blue lines are still at the old house, so people are afraid to park there. So township come over and, you know--
Maybe we'll try and make those to that.
Excuse us a second. So, so the parents that the handicap spot was designated for have both passed away, and now we have, so the sign should be aligned?
It's going to be on either side.
On both sides, so that the blue will go over there.
Probably--
102?
It's a 200 block. It's the only, well, there is one up on 100 block. The 200 block of Beach.
Chief, Doug, you know the best.
Of course he does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will ask him with this assignment. I will tell him that you assigned your student. I love you.
Okay, I'd like to, oh, we're going to, we're going to--
Just for the engineer in regard to the sidewalks--
We need, we need your name.
Gary Holston, 21 21st Avenue. In regards to the sidewalks or the curb, the curb cuts, would the engineer have any idea what you would do with all that water? Would that would be funneled by all these curbs? We have a lot of problems there already, and you'd have to have sewers and everything else to handle that, which would be a lot more money than just a couple curbs. So I, I hope we--
That's why he was working on the calculations. Sorry.
That's a fair consideration. This is unfortunately a policy decision.
By the council, by the way.
And it simply may be dictated by cost.
Thank you very much.
I have a motion to go to closed session adjourned.
That's okay. Richard Bombardier, I'm not from South Seaside Park. 302 Ethan Boulevard. As you mentioned earlier, I just wanted to come up and say I too received my tax bill. And like you, Council President, I had a $15 increase, so I just want to commend the mayor, council, for doing a fantastic job on helping with taxes this year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Josh, we have a public hearing.
A second. Close the favor.